Most outspoken of all.
Okay, we're recording for Randy who's enjoying Las Vegas. He's probably at the casino already.
Hi Randy.
This is a work session, so obviously it's kind of informal. But it's just five after five. This is a joint meeting with the Marquette Township Board and the Marquette Township Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. And we're in the community center, if that matters. We don't have any public, even though it was a posted meeting. So we're just going to have a conversation. The last one we had was great, a lot of good back and forth, a lot of good information between the two boards. I've been listening to quite a few of your meetings and Linda's doing a great job of telling you what we're up to. But we still need to have a conversation. It's just important to keep connecting. We're required to meet once a year, so I think twice a year would be good, April and maybe October, before and after the building season. So I was just going to reiterate a few of the things that the board's been working on, and then I thought I'd let Eric and Jason kind of scope out what they're doing so the board knows, although we did have an update not too long ago. But then it's on the record, too. So we just had our first ever Community Safety Forum on March 29th. We had 15 people show up, which was great. The sheriff and the upset detective of Shoalander did a presentation. We had our fire chief, assistant fire chief, and then Rob Sven gave, yeah, Sved, a presentation on kind of CPR and fire extinguishers and had a video on fires and that you should really have your bedroom door shut if you ever have a fire because it stops the fire from getting in there, unless it starts in the bedroom, I guess. So that was good. I had a couple of people tell me that we really needed to do that every year, and Randy heard the same thing. They thought it was very informative. Board was there. And then we have Community Day coming up on August 5th, so that starts at 1:00. If Linda wants to talk about that later, she can, so you're aware of it, or maybe she has already told you. A little different format this year than we've had at Lyons Field. And then, of course, you know that we had a special meeting to approve the MNRTF grant, and the board authorized $15,000 extra for the match, so that's already in progress. We will, the board is going to meet with the road commission on May 17th at 3:00. If y'all want to come, it's an open meeting. And we try to do that every year, too, and with the possible roadwork that'll be going on, it might be a very timely meeting. Excuse me. And then last night, the attorney general was here. It was an invitation meeting, just for a meet and greet. She just wanted to get together with public officials. There were some veterans, department people, lots of supervisors, a few managers from the county, not from the county, but within the county. Trying to think of some of the other groups. Not too many. There were, I had 50 seats set up, and it was pretty close to packed, so she had a good audience. She was just here an hour and gone. So that's what the board's been working on, unless somebody can think of something different that maybe the commission doesn't know about. So planning, what do you guys want to share?
As you mentioned, the rec grant has been submitted, so we should hear something on that in July. Typically, they'll come up and do a site visit on all the applications, and then we'll have an opportunity to respond to the initial review. But that is a regional trailhead, so it should score very well. We've received the Forestville or Longyear preliminary PUD, and that has been deemed to be a complete site plan, the preliminary submittal. So we have sent that out, per the ordinance, to a number of agencies, Health Department, MDOT, Road Commission, Conservation District, drink commissioner, utilities of interest, fire chief, chief of police.
School district.
School district. So they have a period of 15 days to comment on the proposed, and then that'll come back to us. We'll provide all those comments back to Longyear, and then they'll have 15 days to make any revisions that they deem necessary or desire. Once that's done, then we'll come to the planning commission with all that information, and then the planning commission can choose to schedule a public hearing. So looking at that probably sometime in, maybe late May, maybe really June.
Jason, is that 15 days business days or calendar?
Business days, yep. We received a site plan for Honor Credit Union at the former R&amp;D Distributing Building, so that slate's been wiped clean, and now there's a beautiful new development that's proposed there. We've been working on, when we can, things are starting to get busy again, but housing, zoning text amendments, so allowing, proposing, shouldn't say it. We've been contemplating allowing duplexes or multifamily developments in various zoning districts, not just, you know, the commercial district or the development district, but perhaps it would open up some of those undeveloped properties in Trowbridge Park that, you know, if you're going to build one house off of undeveloped right away, it might not be financially feasible, but if you're able to put up a multifamily development, that might make it more feasible to do that. Residential solar Eric's been working on, so the idea there is, I think when renewable energy land uses were first introduced to the community about, well, probably 15 years ago now, everybody still had, you know, some uncertainty about them. So you had Oak Hill's got a windmill, you know, there's sub-solar in the area, but residential solar in particular has been very popular lately. We've been getting a lot of requests for that. I shouldn't say a lot, but a handful. And currently, there's a federal government stimulus, or not stimulus, but a rebate or incentive to have residential solar. So instead of that being a special use permit, we're looking at making residential solar to a certain parameter use that can be approved in our office, instead of going through a special use, you know, permit where you have to notify all the neighbors, put an ad in the paper, just trying to cut through some of that red tape to make that happen.
Jason, does it matter if it's on the building or, like, standing?
It will, yeah. Yes. We haven't sorted through all that yet. Our tap grant for the pathway connections from Venture here down to Warner on Commerce, and then Wright Street from the highway up to Venture is still in the works, and a final design has been proposed on that, and we should hear something back on that later this summer with a potential 2024 build if we're successful. We still need to install a bench and a kiosk on the south side of the tunnel. I'll be getting with manager Kengus and the building and grounds crew and Lenny, building superintendent of public works, to help us get that installed. Pretty easy project there. Eric's been working on finishing up business license. We try to draw our line between workload as residential and I take commercial, but I am introducing him to site planner views and getting him that next step in the planning world, if you will, getting him used to those. So starting with the Honor Credit Union, we distributed that to our public works department and to the fire department yesterday, so they're looking at a May 10th site plan review on the agenda item. Just driving through the corridor, you know, I'd like to see the highway median get cleaned up. I know that that's something that we do or we asked the road commission to do. I know that we've done it in the past, actually. I think the township board's been out there in the past. So that beautification committee that we had was kind of catchall for some of those things, and so just as a comment, I guess, for me, it would be nice to get that done now that spring has kind of sprung and pass it through the area a few times a day, you start to notice it more and more. And I think that's pretty much it. You know, we're starting to get inquiries about land divisions. Our area's still under a lot of, I shouldn't say development pressure, but there's a lot of interest in the area. And so when you have surveyors contacting you, property owners contacting you about minimum lot sizes, et cetera, that's pretty exciting to know that there's people that are interested in building and developing. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, otherwise that's a snapshot of our day-to-day activity at this time.
Excuse me, I noticed you were working on updating your ordinances in some of the meetings I listened to, cleaning them up and making some adjustments, and the discussion was great.
Right, yeah, so for instance, multifamily right now in Marquette Township, you can develop it in the general business district and in the development district, but in the urban residential district, you can only have it on the northwest corner of Ontario and Warner, and then somewhere along the south side of Warner. Very specific, it's like spot zoning, basically, which is illegal in Michigan. And so we're going to remove that and add those, or propose to add those in there. We still have to vet that through. Right now, we're still waiting to talk to Roger on those particulars to make sure that he gets a review of it before we schedule a public hearing, get people to come in and discuss it, and then if it were to be approved, it would go to the county planning commission and then to the township board for your consideration. So it's a ways off, but hopefully later in the summer. And those are all things to really help, you know, not just affordable housing, but just more housing stock in general. There's been a lot of media, some false, about, you know, our housing needs. I think when Longyear, when we first talked to Longyear and they did a market study for the area, there were 700 units that were needed in Marquette County. You know, we've had 29 homes built in Marquette Township in the last two years, so that's pretty good. But there's more that are needed. And whether they're attainable, affordable, I think there's some things that we can do, adjusting minimum lot sizes in some cases, allowing duplexes perhaps in other areas. But I think that having more housing stock allows people to move around in their, you know, financial need or space need at the time that they're looking for a home. So those are, and these things are coming straight from Michigan Township Association. You know, there's lots of things that we've been, Eric and I have been sharing back and forth, different articles that we find. Speaking specifically, one of them that Eric brought up was about, you know, when you notify neighbors within 300 feet of something, you're typically inviting all the people that don't want the development to happen. So all the people that were involved in the master planning process or telling you that, you know, we want these things in our community, they're not the ones that are showing up in support of these projects. It's the people that believe that they're potentially affected, whether it be, you know, their home values or, you know, access. In fact, they talk about not using the word density at all, like density is a bad word. We should be using the word proximity. How close is that development to recreation? How close is it to the school district? How close is it to the hospital? Is it connected with public utilities? You know, so I've kind of changed my tune a bit in some respects. I think as a professional, you have to be able to change your tune once in a while and be cognizant of other planning initiatives that are out there. So if the MTA is telling you these things, and we've shared some things with the planning commission and will share some more, but yeah, these are policies and procedures that are coming from MTA that they're asking local municipalities to consider with regard to attainable housing and just more housing stock, period, not just necessarily affordable. Affordable's affordable, too, but just more, more housing.
Well, affordable's a relative term, anyway, because affordable for me is not for you, is not for Ernie, is not for John, you know, it's just a relative term.
Right, yeah, and we have, Marquette Township has a higher median income than the surrounding areas, probably even in the city, when you look at, you know, the subdivisions and, yeah, I would say the subdivisions really bump that up. You want to add anything?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Eric, what are you facing or, how are we with the blight? I know you guys have your hands full.
I was just going to say, well, obviously over the winter, I wasn't doing much of all any property maintenance enforcement, but with the snow melting, we've got some of those few outstanding cases. One, the planning commission is very aware of, that I've been, we've been updating you on for the last probably year and a half at this point, so hopefully we'll be able to kind of hit the ground running on that one again in the spring here. And then as far as canvassing goes, we historically have not done that, so I mean, I'll talk with John and Jason here and kind of make a game plan as far as what, if any, canvassing I'll be doing, as far as driving around and writing down property numbers. But yeah, I mean, phone lines are open as far as complaints go, it is a complaint-driven system, so.
Well, the board had talked about at one point hiring some kind of a code officer just for the summer. That was a little while ago. So since you guys have been so busy, too, maybe that's the direction we have to look at at some point. I mean, that's kind of what we were hoping you could do because you have that background, not that you can't, but I'm just saying it's one of the things that needs to be concerned, considered, but don't fill your plate up so much that you can't do, you know, the planning side because that's pretty important as much as you're so busy. So just stay in touch with John or if we have to hire somebody, that's okay, too, or share it somehow.
Yeah, I feel most people, when they get that first letter, address the issue, it's just a couple cases that are really, I would say, the bulk of the workload when it comes to property maintenance, dealing with the, like, for example, the one on Lake Enchantment, the tickets and working with the sheriff and working with our township attorney and going to Cirque du Soleil, and it was, I mean, it's a very involved process. So most, like I said, though, you send the letter, say you got trash in your yard, please clean it up, it's cleaned up, and case closed, so.
That's good. Well, we do have a few cars and stuff in Trowbridge to, you know, for you to write down. What about 550? That's kind of a hot mess.
Yeah, that's one that last year I canvassed a couple times, drive up and down, see what I see. I do know that there's been some, a couple of problem properties on that road in the past, probably still problem properties. But yeah, I'll find some days here to get out in the township car and...
Now's a better time of year, too, with the leaves gone. You can see a whole lot.
Our phones will start ringing soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one on 550 in particular, kind of, I guess it would be east of the 550 store that Eagle's actually been involved with, providing a roll-off dumpster for some of the larger, or the hu, I'm sorry, the human trash, right? And then working with the recycling companies for, so they've been helpful, too. If it turns into something that becomes environmental, obviously we can call them up and, so hopefully there's some progress on that one. And then the other one is, I think, the Biggers, which is kind of a, they clean it up, and then all of a sudden, there's 20 more cars there.
I don't know how people can live like that, but...
It shouldn't be as humorous as it is, but you have to have some sense of humor with that stuff.
Yeah.
But yeah, property maintenance is a big deal, and people appreciate the effort when we do do it. So it's just, it's coming to be that time of year.
Were you going to create a blight ordinance or were you going to modify what we had? I don't remember.
Yeah, we've been looking at that more of a true blight ordinance, but in reality, I think we did a good case study with the Lake Enchantment property last year, and it actually worked out really well with just our existing property maintenance ordinance. So I think we're good to go there and kind of...
It has enough teeth. I think that was part of the discussion, that it didn't have enough.
Yeah, and having Eric's expertise on how to, you know, and consistently administer it, because sometimes, you know, you send a letter in May, and then you get really busy and you don't come back to it in July, you really have to start over again because you have to start the timeframes over. So he's been great about being consistent with it and staying on top of it.
And I mean, everybody, property owners are all different, obviously, like the gentleman down at Lake Enchantment, I mean, he's, he's got a lot of stuff. And so he's, he can't just get rid of it all. I mean, you've got to be realistic with people, and they can't just get rid of it all over a weekend.
Yep.
So with that one especially, it's been, I just want to see a little bit of progress every time I'm out there, or every time somebody goes out there, like the sheriff has taken some photos for me in the past and stuff like that. So baby steps.
Good, that's fine. I think if the neighbors see that there's movement...
Especially on, especially on one like that with the amount of junk and debris that he's got up there, as compared to some others where it might just be a couple bags of trash. Obviously, that you can get cleaned up over the course of the day, but that one in particular, it's weeks and months, so.
Yeah, 550 could be years.
You think it might be time for another bus tour, if you did?
Sure.
Not just for the blight, but for all these other projects that have been going on?
Yeah, we've got some exciting things happening, you know, you can kind of see, next to Freco, they've got their equipment over there and ready to go. So that's nice to see. We're going to have two new restaurants in that area, you know, at the end of this year. And it's nice to see some of these older properties kind of turning over into new developments, and I think we'll see more of that as we continue to go. But yeah, we can schedule something.
You think we could...
When it's not so sloppy.
I know, I know the rule with everybody being at the same spot, you know, like, we're talking about trying to look at the Forestville property somehow so we can kind of get our bearings on that and figure out where everything is and, you know, for a road going in or, you know, whatever, but I know we have to have a notice for all that, but...
Yeah, we can just post it if, maybe in early May or no, maybe early June, we can get out there.
...property, you know? I don't know how close that is to coming up or on the agenda yet, but...
No, not yet. They haven't submitted anything. We actually sent the draft option of purchase back to them after our attorney reviewed it, so that was a little bit slower in process. But yeah, it's a good idea, and we can take a look at that. Would you guys be open to doing it on an off night?
I would.
Sure.
As long as we don't get a crazy bus driver again.
Scary or...
Jason, the bus driver?
I don't know which one it was.
Oh, that was, no, Jason took us last time, didn't you?
No, he didn't.
Oh, no, a crazy bus driver took us, oh, okay. I don't know, did you remember that crazy buster?
I do now that you say that, but it was a, I let it go. Yeah.
That must have blocked out craziness, maybe it was all crazy, but was he speeding? Was that it?
Yeah, corners and...
He had to hold on when he was taking corners, too. He was taking them forward.
Fast and tight.
Jason, we're talking about solar power. Have you heard anything about the solar panels that they're developing on the east coast? My son was telling me about that, using the windows, whatever film they put on the windows and that, and that, it's coming, they're doing that. Still about 10 years away, but if that happens, it will be, every window will be a collector.
Yeah, there's shingles now that also transmit, too.
So working on this, these proposed ordinance amendments in regards to solar energy, I've spoken with somebody from Peninsula Solar, a local company that puts installs, and then Brad Newman with MSU Extension. He's kind of a policy expert, and then I've got the industry expert from Peninsula Solar, and they both made the point that we can put these into place, and then in two years, it could all be obsolete because the technology has advanced. Because as solar panels get smaller, they are able to produce more energy typically. I mean, that's just the way the technology's going in with something like that, it's even...
He said, what, from what you read, there was tall, it was like a film they put on the windows?
Yeah, that's the case. I don't even think we need a permit for it, you know, as long as, you know, because the thing with solar seems to be everybody's concerned with the batteries, you know, where the power's stored, because those are highly flammable and dangerous. However, I will say that our review of zoning is nothing like what it is going to take to get through the county building council department with regard to electric permitting and their permitting. So I think that we can be open and inclusive with whatever comes, and I think it seems like the technology, the better it gets, the smaller things are, the less invasive or intrusive that they are from a, from an aesthetic standpoint. So yeah, we'd be interested to hear more on that. I've read articles on the tinted, or the film that goes on the windows, and then also, like I said, shingles that also transmit, so.
He read on it, he was very impressed with what I'd read. He said, "We may not see it in 10 years, but it's coming, and it may become real quick. We don't know how fast they're going to develop all this stuff."
Good. We look forward to working through those issues.
I attached the priority goals, too. I don't think you guys saw them, or the planning saw them. We got a couple that have already taken off. I remember Ellen Sargent saying, when I was on the planning commission, that she thought that the township board should make sure that we budgeted every year for matches for whatever was coming up. Of course, back then, we were doing a lot of developing with Schwimwood and, you know, all over, making improvements at Lyons and everything. But I think that is something we have to look at. We used marijuana this money, this year, for a couple different projects. Not that, not that we can't keep using that, that would be fine, but who knows when that's going to peter out or reduce. But I think we do need to make an effort to make sure that you have some match money or, you know, we collectively, but for you guys to work with, trying to go for different grants and stuff.
Yeah, that's appreciated. And then, you know, along with that, you know, the $15,000 that you contributed for the Trailhead project, NTN contributed $35,000, and Spirit Watership Partnership contributed $10,000. So that brings our matchup to like 40%, which is the highest I've ever filled an application out for through the DMR. We've always been in a 25 to 30 range, it seems, and so 40 should really bump us up, bump our score.
Do you have any kind of an update on, on the Scott family with their, that you can share?
Yeah, they posted that they were in Marco Island still.
Oh, okay.
I'm friends with them on Facebook, and they, they're not back yet.
Okay. They still want to do something, though?
They do.
At some point, okay.
Again, the idea that was presented to me was that a consortium of business owners in the area, i.e., you know, Chuck Overstar and Swick and the guys that run this development, and then maybe Cedarville, but they're going to want to sell the property. I mean, they were wanting to sell it to us for, they still believe, and I think it's $100,000 an acre. Unless they make a true donation, you know, I don't see us really participating too much in a buy, but, you know, I did tell them if they're willing to donate anything, we'll still name it after their dad and we'll develop it. But we've also talked to somebody in the last several months about wanting to do a multifamily development adjacent to that on the Scott property, so whatever was left over. But I think they'll go with whatever, who gives it the most money for it, honestly. That's been their track record, and they have the ability to do that. If we can somehow get them to agree to donate a portion of it, it does benefit them from a tax standpoint. I brought in Fred Grant Champ, who I know knows those things, and when we spoke with him one time, and there's, there's like a five-year window that they could utilize that tax benefit, if they made one, the donations. But, you know, the, now I don't want to go too far down this road, but the Weld Road, we have quite a bit of acreage down there that we already own, and it would be up to the board and John and the planning commission to consider, you know, perhaps utilizing some of that property, you know, try it with the trailhead. You know, we try it with the Trailhead, see how that goes, but there's a lot of beautiful property back there. A lot of people have wanted a ski hill for a while and a dog park and, you know, it's kinda nice because that area is out of the way. And other than the Oak Hill Estates folks, maybe it doesn't really impact many people. In fact, it doesn't, shouldn't impact Oak Hill Estates at all. So that's one consideration, I mean, from, from my perspective that, you know, instead of trying to reach out for a large purchase, we already have, if we can keep going through the grant process to develop a park property, a property we already own, it may be better. Hi, Steve.
Ooh.
Hey, Steve.
Hi. There's some pizza and stuff up there if you feel like it. We're just kind of catching up.
Where are we at here?
Just, there wasn't really an agenda.
Okay.
Um, we were just talking. I've mentioned the priority goals.
Okay.
We're still looking for storage, um, of course maintaining our revenue and expenses. I think we've got a great communication, not only with partners, but other municipalities too, in the county. We've got a good relationship with everybody. They love coming here. All these events just love, like last night. "Oh, this is such a great room. We just love coming here." So, um, at some point we were gonna talk to the city of Marquette about a cross municipal water agreement. Excuse me. And of course we'll be talking about them, with them about the four twenty-five, or not so much the four twenty-five anymore, but the Forestville project. Come on in. What's the gripey customer?
It's too new for ghosts.
Yeah. And let's see what else. Public Works has some different projects they're working on. We're gonna try to promote the address numbers on homes and businesses as much as we can. I'll keep mentioning it at the meetings. It looks like we've got about forty people that follow our township board meetings.
And sorry to interrupt, but that is something that's written into our property maintenance ordinance, our address numbers and the requirements for them. Um, when that first came up, we had sent out with the water bill mailing in January, February.
Mm-hmm.
We included a little blurt about, "Please get your address numbers up," and we included the requirements for them, so.
For the ordinance.
For the ordinance.
Yeah, they don't know that. So we walked Bishop Woods, just the main road, yesterday and counted. And there were only eight of us that had numbers. I don't know how many houses. We didn't count that, but... Especially with this last snow, it's critical, especially if you talk to the fire chief. Because all of those brick light posts at the end, they're all covered up. The mailbox is covered. There's just like a little hole. I think I'm the only one that has my number on the outside. And they've got big posts and stuff on either side of them. They're covering up the number. I think you said, Dan, how many times you've gone up to the wrong door, finding, trying to find some house in the middle of the night for whatever reason? Cause there's no numbers. They don't think about it. And it's a foggy night, it's rainy and nothing reflects. But it's important. So I'll just keep badgering people at the meetings.
So maybe we need an article somewhere where people would actually see that it made a difference. People love that Facebook post where someone tells the story about why those numbers need to be there. Maybe our fire chief needs to write a short article. I know it's expensive to have the township crier. Who's gonna tell me it costs a lot of money? Um, but I think people read the newsletter. I'm just real concerned they don't read the back of the water bill. So I don't know how expensive it is to do one newsletter a year, to email it out, um, to have someone who makes a difference. Who's the crier for Third Street? You know, somebody says, "This is gonna happen on Third Street," and people read the article. How do we get them to put those numbers out there? You don't wanna punish people, you wanna reward people. I don't know. Why aren't the numbers out there?
They didn't know they had to.
Well, everybody know, I can tell you I have a rental in the city of Marquette and they inspect those rentals how often? Every year, every two years. And it says right there, the numbers will be on the apartment. And if, when they come to inspect, if they're not there, you better have them there or you're gonna get a ticket.
Well, it's different in the city though, too. It's still, the rules are different.
Life is a life.
I know, but people expect that in the city.
If Dan's knocking on my door and I'm the wrong person, I'm not gonna be very happy. But if he's not knocking on my door and I need him, I'm not gonna be very happy. So...
I don't disagree. I'm just saying.
Yeah, but it is important.
Mm-hmm.
So how can, so how can you get your neighbors to put them on their door?
Well, there is a little bit of an association type thing. I don't have their email, but I can figure out how to, so I was gonna do that.
Personal, like you need it. Well, personal things work.
Especially in subdivision, it's not quite so hard. But even then, if you're too far out in the woods, then it has to be by the road. So they don't have to get all the way into the house before they find out that they're in the wrong spot.
I'm still a supporter of once, at least once a year, a newsletter that celebrates the people here, or I don't know, something, but I don't know.
I just hate to wait until there's a glow in the sky that you're, you know, there it is.
Oh, yeah.
Like the fire.
Yeah, no, no hope then.
We'll work on it.
Can we, yeah, maybe we'll see how much that newsletter costs a year.
John might have that since, um, it'd be in Randy's files maybe.
So are all the numbers on the buildings here?
Yes.
Yes. And so they were just part of the requirement when you built in this sum?
Well, commercial ones are typically not an issue.
Well, they are in the highway. The only ones I see are the, that fire or that tire place. They're big. I love them. Huge. But I don't see a lot of them. Maybe I never...
No, there aren't a lot of them. That's what made me bring that up in the first place. I noticed the numbers on, um, the new tires, discount tire, they're on both sides, big, bold numbers. I said, "Holy Christ, does that stand out? You know, why aren't all the rest of these businesses and why don't all people on their homes have it?" The more you look, you don't see a lot. I don't wanna embarrass anybody, but does everybody have their house numbers here? You don't get up to raise your hand or anything, but it's, not everybody does it.
Yeah, it sounds like it's expensive.
No, no.
Yeah.
We'll keep plugging.
That's all we can do, you know?
Talking about numbers, going back in time when I was disaster planning, security and everything else and that. We visited a, a company down in Milwaukee and it was a security company with lots of computers, everything else inside. And I commented to them, "On your brochures and everything else in that, they all know you're a security. You've got a great big number and on the building and the location." I said, "You're trying to keep people away from your building because of all the security problems." So they had to do something. They didn't quite know what, because they realized what it was. And then if someone was interested, all of a sudden they had the address and everything else. And looking at the building, the number was there and everything else. So it's kinda double-edged sword on some of this stuff, depending on the type of business you have and that. So if you want to advertise it and put the number there, will it have some negative effect on your business and that? I don't know, but I ran into this with one company down in Milwaukee and that. There are problems like that you have to face and I don't have an answer for it, but...
I didn't think about that. John, do you wanna share anything about the, um, where we are with, well, either that or Jason Renver or Forestville?
Um, well, they're both basically going to be coming through the planning process. But Forestville in particular has led the township down a completely different path. And that is, how do we address our transportation network? So the township board agreed to fund preliminary engineering on the fix for this intersection down here, which is Forestville, Commerce Drive, County Road four ninety-two. The catch, of course, being we still don't own any of the roads. So we're funding preliminary engineering on infrastructure we don't own, knowing that we have to find a solution because the problem already exists and it won't go away if Longyear never builds, because it already exists. So at this point, Wade Trim had, well, they had looked at both the option of a roundabout and a boulevard option. The roundabout, I think, would probably provide the safest intersection for all four legs. But it comes with a lot of problems specific from a constructability and maintainability perspective. The road commission has significant concerns on both of those subjects with that location. Horizontal and vertical curves, um, a regulated stream, bedrock, just a whole bunch of issues over there where they did not think a roundabout could be built and maintained, to the point where truck traffic on four ninety-two would not have problems in the winter. So we're looking at a modified boulevard type option. The road commission is considering other impacts in the immediate vicinity of that intersection. That if they're gonna go for funding, we should try to fix it all. So more details will be coming on that by the end of the month.
What is a modified boulevard? I can't remember what a roundabout is, but...
Out on the highway is, is what you would call a standard boulevard. It's, it's wide enough that you can put the Michigan left turn lanes completely in the median. Down there, you can't widen the footprint of County Road four ninety-two because of those natural features. So if they're going to put in a median divider to keep traffic from going straight across four ninety-two or making left turns onto four ninety-two, the median has to be narrower. So it's basically the width of two curves back to back almost. And there's going to still be left turns for traffic on four ninety-two onto either of the side legs, but not off of either of the side legs. So then, if you can only make a right turn off of Forestville Road or Commerce Drive, how do you get back going the other way? You've gotta put a Michigan left somewhere else. The only place you can put one for, um, the Forestville traffic is actually on a flat spot right next to Widdow Supply. So there would be a Michigan left there if the right of way could be acquired. We're not sure that they'll be able to get a Michigan left for the Commerce Drive traffic anywhere. Because the right of way, as you head towards the city, is so narrow. And the road commission doesn't seem as interested in condemning property from residential, in residential areas. So a, at least there, they, they don't necessarily sound like they're interested in that. So we don't know what the final design will look like. That's really what I mean when I say modified, because it's not a full width boulevard. It's kind of outside the box because they're so limited on what you can do on that corner.
And there was discussion to go out further on Wright Street and have an intersection come out that way. And it was discovered that there were two homes in there that would kinda prohibit that.
East.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, that one was ruled out before the township board even agreed on looking at specifically improvements to the intersection. Because again, it would be impacts to residential property where one or more families would have to be removed from their homes in order to make a connection to the east. And the road commission pretty much have the same stance on that. They're not opposed to condemning property where it doesn't impact the residence itself and it's far enough away from those homes, but when it's directly in their front yard or removing them from their homes, they take a different stance. That's my understanding. They may say something slightly different, but that's what I agree.
If they move, how much room do you have on, off of four ninety-two coming up Commerce to the, to the east, I guess? Is there any room there to widen it?
Yes, a little bit. And the roundabout concept that was presented by Wade Trim actually did that. It pushed the bulk of the roundabout to the east. The problem is the further east you go, the more uphill you go, the more the long, uh, Forestville leg has to come up, the more impacts you have to that regulated stream. And if you impact more than three hundred feet of that stream, it triggers an EPA review. The road commission's history with the EPA has not been great, at least in the time I've lived around here. And I just don't know that that's a good idea.
It's just a bad intersection. Oh, and we get off of that one then, unless somebody else wants to, talk about whatever you want, I don't care. Um, Renver, we signed the, it's called an option agreement, I think, for a year and set the, um...
Hasn't been signed yet.
Well, that's right. Legal's got it.
We volleyed it back to them.
Yeah, that's right.
Monday.
We, the board took action on it, I should've said.
Right, yeah. On the revisions that Roger and you guys had made to it.
And that was, um, to hold that property for them basically for a year. And so they can try to get their funding, figure out what they're gonna do.
Well, there was a chuckle earlier when, uh, Jason mentioned, uh, false information about housing. And it's an inside joke because I was the big April fool following for, uh, I don't know, was it Man About Town article about housing?
Yeah, that, that...
Or on the street? Yeah, we're on the street maybe. But I'm, I'm, I'm old enough that I don't mind being a fool. And I'm probably gonna be a fool many times before I check out. But I, I've got something I'd like you to take a look at regarding Renvari. And it's one page of my comment, which would take about a minute to read, but I attached some pretty pictures for you too.
I'll take the pictures.
Yeah, it's always good to have pictures, right?
Yeah, the board can't read. We just look at pictures.
Well...
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow.
Lots of pictures, yeah. Yeah, the modified version.
Nice paper, huh?
Yeah, really.
Penny rolls up a nice, nice stock there.
Look at that ink, wow.
It's good for the photos.
Nothing but tap shelf for Mark.
I guess.
I guess.
I mean, I follow them footsteps here. It's professionals.
He's not heavy. The G's not heavy. We don't have kinkos around here.
Yeah, and if somebody's got something else, you know, planning wise, what can we do for you?
Yeah, we've, we've had some comments about the lack of timeliness on snowplowing in the subdivision.
I would agree with that.
So I know we've poked the road commission before and it kinda improved for a few years. In fact, we had some comments saying, "Oh, this is the best it's ever been." That was probably a few years ago.
This year? Oh, okay.
Um, so, and we used to have a truck when Greg Britton was working with us still. And I think we had a, obviously he worked for the road commission, so it made sense. But if there's anything we can do to improve that, I think that would go a long way.
Well, you guys can come to the May seventeenth meeting for sure. I mean, it's still an open meeting with the road commission.
Oh, it probably has a lot more teeth coming from the board.
Well, I mean, yeah, but sometimes the more the merrier. I don't wanna gang up on them. But there's new staff there too that, that we can explain to them what's important to us. They work for us, so...
Well, it's funny how, and I noticed this, the last big blast we got, I remember Saturday morning, like, I get up pretty early. And I think I did some grocery shopping around eight AM that morning, maybe I went to the gas station, I don't remember. Anyway, the roads are plowed, um, at least Northwoods was. And that was surprising. But then again, it's on Saturday where they're getting time and a half. And so it's just managing that, I think, a little more effectively.
Well, we didn't...
But I wouldn't pretend to know.
We didn't get plowed because the lady across the street, we were surprised.
Did you?
She got her van out.
Oh, by the city.
Never had the city plows come by down my street before, and they came down my street. I think there must've been a new driver, maybe he was lost, but...
It must have been 9:00, and the poor lady across the street from us has a van. And when she backed out, it was just ridiculous because it was, you know, a good eight inches or something.
It was heavy.
Yeah. And when you got, we walked out to the road at 9:00, 10:00, 10:00, nobody had gone out. So, she was the first one. I didn't know how she made out, but...
Well, you know, I kind of brought it up to Jason, and you kind of want to try and be a cool township and attract people here. And someone just moved here last year, and they were trying to get out of Oak Hills. This winter, it's like, why did we move here? Can't, you could not get out of there with a two-wheel drive car.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
And then it freezes, and then it's, you've got all those rusts there, and you can't drive a straight line because it's pulling you this way or pulling you that way.
Have you got a bunch of mailboxes that are destroyed, too, in your circle? Or did we, too, just destroy?
I mean, we all was the last to get plowed. I mean, I understand they got to get the trunk lines and all the highways and stuff done, but I never see a plow before midnight. After, if the storm was midnight the night before, it could be 24 hours before we see a plow.
Well, we're going to have to tell them.
They cut their budget a lot with people plowing. That's the problem. I think they have half the amount of people plowing now than they did a few years ago.
And many of them are seasonal employees, too, so they don't have necessarily the long-term experience of those people that have been there for 30 years.
I think they bring on 20 or 25 seasonal, if I was not mistaken.
And then they don't have to pay them benefits? Is that the deal? What do seasonal people get?
I, that's none of my business, so I can't answer that.
But we don't know that, right?
I don't know.
But they're called seasonal?
Yeah, they're not full-time, permanent.
They worked it out with their union, so I'm not sure how they did it.
Okay. So, can we hire, so this would be the question. Can we, as a township, hire someone to plow county roads?
The roads aren't ours, I don't know. So, I guess we'd have to ask them.
That would be what we...
Well, the roads weren't ours to pay of either, but we did it.
Yeah, I know.
We did.
It's going to take that much money out of their budget that they don't have to pay. So, I...
We thought that the $7 million road project would save them a bunch of money, too.
They could care less.
And that we could at least get a couple things that we asked for, but it didn't work.
Well, and it did for the first few years that we enjoyed our current road village. I think that was the case, if you talk to manager Gerard. It just seemed like everything was better. And now, it's kind of weighing again. So, I don't know what, you know, like I said, you've got Pete Dukes, who's the new boss, and perhaps there's some wiggle room for conversation on that. It's almost to the point where, you know, we're a chartered township and we're a fairly, size-wise, land-wise, we're a large township. Population-wise, we're not a large township. But when you start contemplating things like full-time fire, a fire department, it's like you're kind of getting to that next step where what else do you bring under that umbrella? And I don't know if our road village could probably not be used for plowing, if you'd have less considered it maintenance.
Not the way the village was worded.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't know.
And we're still subsidizing that anyway, another 50%.
Right.
Doesn't cover.
Yeah, the village isn't even covering all the debt payments.
Doesn't cover it anymore.
Okay.
It did before everybody went to the tribunal.
So, is the road village, it's not on the tax roll anymore?
Yeah, it was a 15-year village.
It's a 15-year village?
Yep.
Starting in 2015.
But doesn't cover, cover because of the tax revenue. So, the additional has to come out of general fund. Same with law enforcement. That has to come out, the additional has to come out of general fund, too.
Well, the option is to, yeah, right. I mean, you spend what you have or you add to it, and we've chosen to add to it.
We didn't have a choice. It wasn't a choice.
Well, you always have a choice, but it might not have been a good choice.
Maybe it's something that we could put on a general election.
Do you want road maintenance?
If we want to have our roads plowed, this is, we did that for law enforcement. Overwhelmingly, they supported it. I know what it would cost to have seasonal or one of our public works drivers be trained to be a plow driver.
Well, we'd have to have a plow, too, then. Or lease it somehow, have to. We talked about that years ago, having one of their guys be like our township person. And that kind of fell through, I think he resigned.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I think if you tied the snow plowing to emergency service, you'd probably have a chance. Nobody's ever going to deny a fire policeman.
No.
Not in my history that I've done so.
Well, and we're going to have to eventually, whether we, we're going to have to tie EMS to all of this, okay? Because there's a cost.
If you can't get the ambulance to the residents, what good is it?
Yeah, and there's a cost to the EMS, and it's more than we maybe are supporting today. There is a cost.
Ambulance is, ambulance is paying for itself.
Today, Lynn, but I can tell you that you can only staff all of this with paid-on-call people so long, okay? And when you ask people who have full-time jobs and are expected to be at work to go at 2:00 in the morning to fight a fire or save a person, and then they have to go to work at 7:00, they can't afford to get hurt because they're expected to be at their job. We're going to have to look at it differently. And other people are encountering the very same thing across the state.
But it is, we are fortunate in the township that Dan has done a great job recruiting a bunch of new people. And it's been a very difficult job for him to do, but he's done a great job. And we've got a lot of young, new young blood over there right now. And I'm proud of him for what he's done. So, but yeah, to do more, you're always asking more.
And as we grow, so we want to grow, right? We want more housing, we want more people to come to our township. There's more options to use those services, especially as people age. And especially if we don't plow the roads, okay? They're all going to fall.
What's the legal obligation of the county to plow? Is it, is there a document?
That's their job, yeah. They plow the townships.
I know. Is there a, is there a document that describes their duties?
Like after every three inch?
I imagine.
When they have to plow them by, no, probably not.
Oh, yeah, I don't think it'd get that specific.
You're probably getting into policy at that point.
We can find out.
And they're going to do what they can afford to. That's really what it comes down to. If they don't have enough revenue to do more than they already are, it's pretty defensible.
And the revenue comes from the state of Michigan?
Act 51, so it's your gas tax.
Out of the state of Michigan?
Correct.
Based on population or road?
Miles.
Miles of road.
Yeah. Going back to where this road maintenance discussion started with Dan's point about they have to do the highways first and then, like, Wright Street or County Road 492, however you want to refer to it by, those are major roadways. The funding for major roadways is about four times the amount you get funded for local roads. So, after winter, the Act 51 money the road commission gets for the local roads has already been spent for the year, just keeping it plowed. That's why every township, every township up here has their own road village because the road commission simply has no funds left after winter to do anything to fix those roads.
Except for...
And now, you have EVs coming in, not paying a gas tax. So, what's happening to that revenue?
So, is that all the townships in the state of Michigan? That's how it works?
Have villages? None at all.
Act 51 is, it funds every road commission in every city. The cities own their own roads, and the road commission's own the rest.
What do the villages own, same as the cities?
Well, they're, they're part of a township, but they might have some Act 51 money, but I guarantee you, they're normally pretty small. They're not getting a whole lot of money.
That's money coming from the state somewhere or another.
How much do we get in the library up here?
Oh, my gosh.
Here's a quick story.
Oh, my gosh.
So, I was itching to watch the movie Moneyball, which I haven't seen in a while. Love that movie. And instead of ordering off Amazon on DVD, I said, well, Carol's like, why don't we just go to the library again? I was like, sweet, good idea. So, we went over there, and she grabbed three movies, came out. I was like, oh, how much was that? She goes, it's free. I was like, how is it free? How do they make money? And she's like, well, township pays a certain amount. I was like, well, I know that, I just couldn't believe it.
200,000 plus.
They make their money on late fees. They don't make them on rentals, which I don't, I mean...
They make their money, but, and their late fees are oftentimes waived.
Right.
So, they make, they make their money on the village money, and then they also get lots of donations and, yeah.
Book sales.
I know John's got a soft spot for the library.
Well, Andrea will be at the next board meeting, the 5-3 board meeting, to give her, her annual pitch.
What does the township want? Do you want a library card or do you want your roads plowed?
That's just it.
Do you want parks or do you want the library?
They want both. I mean, when you ask the public, they, they do, the people who vote for the library, 70% of the people who vote, want the library.
70% of the people also voted to sell tax on the, on the road village, too.
Right, yes.
And they would vote for EMS. And they would vote, they would vote for those things, right? They would probably vote for a roof over the ice arena, okay, if you put it in front of them.
Well, they did the rec village. They agreed to that, so...
I think the residents of our township expect the roads to be plowed.
They do.
A lot better than what they are being plowed.
It's a great discussion because you're trying to grow, or you want to grow sustainably. You want to bring more housing, more people, but yet, these people are going to expect the services at the same level as wherever they came from, whether it's the city, another township, so...
Downstate where they only get two storms a year?
Yeah. I always, you know, we went down to the National Planning Conference in Phoenix one year, and the roads were immaculate. And they've probably been there for 20 years untouched. But I was, who was I talking to? Somebody about just, why don't we get more money for roads based on your geographical location and how the condition of your roads changed so much here? Which is, I know, I know. Who are you?
Well, just going to Wisconsin.
But these are interesting conversations to have because I believe, and I think we did a really good service on the roads with our road village, being able to explain to people, hey, if you live here, along this section, this is what your PISA rating is, here's what we're going to do for you within the next three years. That went over very well. But the point of that is I believe in being proactive and taking care of our own instead of relying on other, you know, it's fine to go out and get a grant here for a park or a trailhead or something, but these major issues that people, you know, if you did a community survey, roads would still be at the top. Keeping a low tax base would also be right there. So, yeah, these are interesting...
What would be the, what's the ballpark of cost? Yearly cost for the township to do the roads?
Well, right now, we, we thought we could...
You're talking about plowing? Plowing the roads?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, I think it depends on how you staff it, first of all. If it's just seasonal employees, the way the road commission does it, it'll probably be half of what it would be if they were full-time. And is it done by one employee? Because that one person won't get it done any quicker than it's currently being done. So, you have to add to that. So, two employees, say you have to pay them $20,000 for the winter, plus you have to pay some benefits. You're already up to $60,000. You have to have multiple trucks at a quarter million apiece. Got to pay for those somehow.
So, you're talking five to $10 million?
Storage and repairs.
Something like that, right?
Well, you have a period of time here, though. You have to do a five to 10-year period because those trucks...
Those plow trucks you can, you can run for a good 20 years, but now you have to have a heavy equipment mechanic to maintain them.
Garage.
There's a lot more to it than just paying a couple of guys for a few months to run trucks because...
Or you can contract with someone.
We should start with the road commission.
Well, we did that, you know, Dan and I looked at the police. And, you know, it was fiscally more responsible to stay where we were than to try to run it. And maybe, I know, there have to be people that clean roads. Someone cleaned that parking lot over at that mall. They're running plows. I mean, you know, I don't know.
They're using front lawners with push boxes.
Yeah, that's different. That's Overstar.
I would guess there are people that do, who does the subdivisions?
The county.
There you go, you have someone.
Yes.
Yeah.
Chewing up his own blade?
It was a tough year, though. I mean, it was...
It was heavy snowing.
It was a tough year. And the biggest thing is like Dan said, is the response time. By the time they showed up, that mat was already a foot high on the roller, you know? And so, they never did get it bare for months after, it seems like.
So, the neighbors plowed in the neighborhoods the best they could.
Yeah.
I know Northwoods Estates is done by Overstar, I believe, with a truck, not a heavy piece of equipment.
You know who does Forest Hills? Because they have a, I was in there Monday, and it was, it was rough. It was really rough.
And they've got a homeowners association there, so that's...
Somebody has to do it when it's rough.
Well, we can approach the subject for sure next month.
I think it should be on our goals, Lynn.
Pardon?
I think it should be on our priority goals.
To do what?
Plowing. We never talked about it really before, but I think we should add that as far as snow removals, snow plowing for the township residents.
Can we call it road maintenance and put it under road maintenance? I mean, what else do we have to do with the roads now? They're falling apart. Other people have holes in their roads, right?
Well, the road committee's made, got recommendations, right? What we're going to do.
Yeah, and I think those have to be updated already after winter, too.
Yeah, we still won't have enough money. We'll still have to subsidize it, so...
So, that's, so the tribunal's really affected that because I was under the assumption that we had about 50,000 a year for road.
Yeah.
That's what we, that's what we budgeted.
Plus some to pay off the debt from the general.
Yeah.
But we lose that because of the valuation of businesses that, but they're paying, or the valuation went down, so they don't pay enough taxes. When you look at the village, all of a sudden, that village went down that we collected, directly related to the businesses.
So, we don't bring in 50,000 anymore?
Yeah, we have that. That's what we budget normally.
We take 50,000 on the general fund.
Yeah.
So, you budget it when the road, so how much is budgeted to come in off the tax for the roads?
Less than the debt payment.
It's in the debt.
Less than the debt.
Less than the debt payment.
So, we pay the difference on the general fund?
It's about double.
So, we're not taking enough, it can't be double because we couldn't have lost double with the black stores.
We have lost $80 million in taxable value since 2009 because of the tribunal.
But the township lost that much?
That we can't tax, yes, yes, the township.
So, that's...
80 million in taxable value.
And then had to pay back pay them for three years, you know? That was ridiculous.
And it compounds.
Well, and I get that, but it's not half of what we budgeted, is it? I mean, are we getting half of what we used to get?
The village covers approximately two-thirds of the debt payment. The remaining third, and whatever we do for annual maintenance, is subsidized by the general fund.
So, a third of what...
So, that limits what else, anything else we can do.
So, a third of what we thought we were going to have, we don't have, and now we have to pay out of another pot?
and whatever we do for annual maintenance is subsidized by the general fund.
So a third of what.
So that limits what else, anything else we can do.
So a third of what we thought we were gonna have, we don't have, and now we have to pay out of another pot.
Yeah, and if we do more, then it's about half.
There's more to the debt payment than just reduced revenue. Let's be fair.
Right, yeah, there has to be.
The scope of the project increased from start to finish as well, so the debt payment got bigger. I can't give you all the facts, because it was before my time, but I remember reading about some of that in the paper. Um, so it's more than just the tax tribunal impacts, but the tax tribunal impacts have made and have, have created issues for every millage we collect.
For the library, too.
Over, across the street.
Yeah. That's very sad.
It's disappointing, because those decisions are made contrary to what our assessors are legally allowed to do.
Legally required to do.
Correct, yeah. They're required to do something that the tax tribunal can say, eh, that doesn't matter anymore.
What are they required to do?
There's, the, yeah, the book is literally, it's about this big.
Guide for all this?
Yes. So when you get your site plans and the project is gonna be ten million dollars for Meyer, it's based on how many square feet, what kind of, um, two-by-fours you're gonna use, what your structure of your roof is, you know, the land, it takes all of that in, and there's, every one of those has a page in the book. It's just amazing. How many nails? They have it all figured right down, the windows, are they triple pane, are they double pane? Is it on a slab? Is it a nine-foot ceiling? You know, all of that stuff is what determines the assessment. So Curran comes out and says, we've got, um, and I don't know the right terms, Carl could tell me, two-by-fours uh, in our construction, and then they end up having like one-by-fours instead. So he came into Dulce and they corrected all that stuff, and he fixed his assessment and it went down. Um, then he came back in and said, well, we didn't use these kinds of bathroom fixtures or something. He came in twice. And she said, okay, so we can make that adjustment. And then he went to the tribunal.
And, yeah.
And got it lowered yet. So, the assessment, assessor is required to do this this way. She doesn't have the, the flexibility. The border review has some little flexibility if it's something kind of extraneous or an, you know, exceptional, but we can't take it down to two-thirds, you know, remove two-thirds of their taxes, like the tribunal can.
Why do they try to make it sound like it's subjective on the assessor's part, then?
I don't know. Yeah, it's not.
I get out of these.
It's not. The, the term, um, they will say that the assessor can, I've heard said, like renegotiate, and that's not true. It's not a renegotiation. It's a reassessment of the facts of what's on the property. So, you know, semantics is a big part of what you hear, as it, as it goes around and around.
That's what Curran started doing. He wasn't had the, he had the reassessment of the facts done first, and then went to the tribunal in addition to.
Right.
So he got his taxes reduced as much as he legally could through the reassessment of the facts. And when it wasn't as low as he wanted it at that point, nothing against Merck, he's gonna protect his own interests.
No, right, because this is, they can do it.
Especially if, if the option is there, why wouldn't you? Not that I wanna say that in public too many times, but it still wasn't as low as he wanted it to be. You go to the tribunal and you're, you're almost guaranteed to get something else, because somebody will be able to find a flaw in that ream of paper the assessor had to follow and nitpick it enough to make a difference.
Just an example, going way back, to start with Lowell's. Lowell's was assessed at sixty-one dollars a square foot. Went down to twenty-nine dollars a square foot. Just look at the effect of the dollars for that, and you look at Walmart, Target, all the rest of them, that all went down. Myers is another prime example. They said, we're never gonna do that.
They told us at the grand opening.
Within six months, it was there.
Yep.
And then all of a sudden, we go back to Walmart, I think it's Walmart, Hancock, City of Hancock, was through this, and then they went and looked at what was happening in Wisconsin. Walmart was paying this in Wisconsin, they're only gonna pay this much in Michigan because of the tax tribunal. The effect is astronomical. And we're not gonna be able to do anything up here until it starts affecting them downstate. When it starts biting them hard downstate, you'll see something.
Because they have the numbers.
But it'll be too late, because we'll never see that money back.
Yeah, we'll never get it back.
We can't get it back.
In, in these proceedings before the tribunal, is the property owner represented by attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, who represents the township at the tribunal?
We, we get an attorney. We have a local attorney, and then when we actually went down to the tribunal physically, uh, we had an attorney down there.
Okay.
Uh, Roger has spent eighty thousand dollars, or we've spent with Roger from the civil side, eighty thousand dollars, and a lot of that is, I don't wanna say negotiations, but the, but it is that reassessment of the property that, and he knows a lot about it. He and Dulce work closely together to, to reassess the property and say, okay, we can do this. Um, but in, in any event, they end up going down anyway.
So do we ever have any success with our attorneys?
Nobody in the state has.
No, yeah, nobody has.
The attorney that is out there from downstate has hit these companies and said, you wanna cut your taxes in half? They says, yeah, it won't cost you a cent. We'll just take your savings from the first year.
Yeah, it's thirds.
It was a third?
Two-thirds, yeah.
Two-thirds the first year. That's all we take, not past anything.
Contingency, right.
Right.
And all the companies, and it isn't the local people here, it's the corporate offices that are doing it.
Well, it's some local.
It's not dictated by the square footage of your property either. It's, it's every national firm, and even some of the local firms have realized that they can't compete if they don't. So.
Best Buy went before they closed up. Walmart, I think, was one of the last ones. The theater, bowling alley, Curran, um, the two auto zones, Auto and Advanced or whatever.
And one of them is back again?
Yeah, they'll pretty much go every year. And they can go back three years, where we have to pay them back three years.
Not just us.
Is the township ever considered having any kind of corporate tax?
We talked about how we could tax the corporations. Um, and we couldn't really come up with a good solution, because you have to tax uniformly. We can't, we can't just pick up.
Right, but I mean, like, for example, Chicago has a corporate, a tax on corporations, it's part of the, one of the many other taxes.
The city, the state?
The Cook County.
County does?
Yeah, they, they, and I think it might be on the number of employees. But, I mean, has the Michigan Association of Townships ever talked about that?
I don't know that.
Good thing to bring up that story.
I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you could impose in the township, a head tax on the corporations per employee. Now, they'd probably just pass it along to the consumer, but, you know. Well, I.
It's an option.
I think it's gonna get worse before it gets better, and I think as a board, you're gonna have to look at other ways to bring in more revenue, or it's gonna be really tough.
But it's all, it falls on the backs of the residents. That's the problem. There's no way to get them, and they're the ones, how many times does the fire department go up to Walmart because somebody did something, you know?
I'm not necessarily saying to tax residents, you know, there must be other ways to get some kind of income from businesses.
I know MTA has looked at that. I know they have, cause I remember Randy Gerard talking to some of the attorneys for MTA and, and other places.
Can you do a DDA two percent? You own all these places?
Not two percent, two mills.
Yeah, or two mills, right.
But I think you have to have a project, or you have to have a plan, right, to do that.
You don't, you don't own a Marquette. They just started it and.
So Marquette has a tip district, I think.
Yeah, they do.
Not, not Third Street?
No.
No. I think it might be this year, but we're just doing the two per, two mills. And we didn't have any plan, they just, they just got in it and.
Well, you don't have to have voter approval for anything two mills or under.
Right.
But I still think it's, there's restrictions on it, and maybe it's different with the city. I don't know.
Well, something to look at. We can ask Roger.
I would think that the, the Third Street millage-based portion of their DDA is very similar to our DDA. They just don't have a plan to support the millage they're collecting yet. Some sort of project priorities or whatever.
Well, it gets thrown in with, with the DDA monies. And we, we get taxed on Third Street, the two percent, and then it goes right in their coffers. And then we get services in return for that, but it's probably more than what we're paying for.
So they're keeping your sidewalks clean and, and taking care of the hanging flower baskets and that kind of thing?
Decorations.
Yeah.
It doesn't benefit people for snowplowing, unfortunately. The things that we're looking at, that we need, are not necessarily within the DDA. No, but at least you could get money, some revenue, coming that, coming in from there. You know, two, two mills of all these properties, I don't know what it, seems like it'd be pretty substantial to me.
It'd be about two hundred thousand a year, right now.
That's it?
I think so.
But that money has to, well, then the, the board would play the shell game in, in utilizing, you know, that money for specifically identified projects within the project area, right? And then they would just use other funds to then work on the roads and snowplowing, yes, but, yeah. We've talked about that. The DDA has, they've been active lately, and we're at that point where we're gonna have to decide what, we've identified the projects, we've got. It could even be more than two mills if you have an election.
Right.
No, we're only allowed to go to two mills.
No, you can do more if you have an election.
Two mills is without an election.
Without an election, okay.
Yeah.
My mistake.
So if the residents, residents vote on it, so they're not paying any more money?
No, they don't. It, the, the DDA votes on it, and we have some residents in the DDA.
Above two mills is what he's talking.
To go above two mills?
Oh, above, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, to go above two mills would be a township election.
If the residents knew where that money was gonna be, who was gonna be paying it, you know?
But it would only benefit then properties in the DDA, specifically once you collect them. So it's, it's a little bit of a balancing act, right?
Well, indirectly, it would involve the residents anyhow, because right now, they're picking up the cap for a lot of this other crap that, that Walmart and all these others are not paying.
You're preaching, preaching to the choir, I know. Part of the challenge we had when Randy was on his way out, when he was doing some of this research with one of the MTA attorneys, Rob Adal, is a special assessment. And it would be really tricky to do, but it would have been for specifically fire and EMS.
Water service. Well, in.
No, not, not in water. It would have been for fire and EMS response.
Like a used task, yeah.
Well, if they found a loophole, we gotta find one.
Well, they said we couldn't do it.
Huh?
He said we couldn't do it. The attorney.
It was a good idea.
It was a great idea Randy had.
It would have been really tricky to make it happen.
Well, that's what attorneys are for.
Yeah.
Trickiness, right?
That's. His point was, he didn't advise us to move forward on, not strongly.
We also talked about eliminating retail establishments larger than fifty thousand square feet at one time, internally. Walmart's a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, Myers one ninety-six. So fifty thousand square feet is probably something the size of Harbor Freight. There's a lot more value in residential, I think, at, at this point in history, it seems. Does anyone know if there's any advantages or disadvantages to be a, a village versus a township? Or vice versa?
Own your roads. I think, I think they're your roads you have to plow.
The what?
If a village, villages, if Marquette Township, you have to have so many people a square mile or something. We looked at that when I was on the township board long ago to become a village. Trowbridge Park would qualify to become a village, but not all of Marquette Township. That was my understanding. We can certainly look at that again.
So I think there's a disadvantage to that vote, too, in that the village still lies in the township, so you would pay both village millages and township millages, or something along those lines. So you might be getting double taxed then for any of these additional millages.
I bet you the revenue sharing is different, you know, the metric.
But, but it went in for to look at that and see how that works.
How you're a village.
I thought it was on so many people per square mile or something, so many houses, yeah.
An absolute there?
I don't know. One look.
We could look at that for you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that might be interesting.
But generally, villages are more spread out.
I don't think they're spread out as we probably think.
They're smaller than the township that they lie in.
Yeah, and it has something to do with the borders. Who, who borders them, if a city borders them or if a township does.
It would, a lot, there's something about, they wouldn't be able to annex the village, so.
Yeah, something about the border.
Lots of talk back in the old day about, yeah.
Maybe we could annex the city.
Yeah, I think we should.
I was just gonna say that.
We, we were the city in the beginning, okay? The city was part of Marquette Township.
No, Marquette County was Marquette Township.
Yeah.
In eighteen.
Forty-nine.
Seventy, yeah.
Eighteen forty-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Forty-eight, forty-eight.
It was all Marquette Township.
The city broke off in forty-nine.
Well, before my time.
They're a year.
Are you sure?
Year behind us. Yeah, we, I would remind the city commission that every once in a while when they get sassy. Bob Wright and I used to argue about that, and said, hey, we were here first.
Yeah, we were.
We're not your stepchild.
We're older than they are.
Yep.
I know it's a bad thing to even say or think about, but would there be any benefit to becoming part of the city?
Um, I think your taxes are gonna go up.
Yeah, for sure.
And you're not gonna get sidewalks.
Not gonna, I mean, the millage rate isn't that much higher than Marquette Township. Yeah, but you're only adding four thousand users or residents. I would think that that is a disadvantage.
Why?
Well, the city, from what I understand, is already a hundred million in debt, right? So you're gonna balance that on the back of twenty thousand people as it goes now.
Oh.
So if you were to add four thousand people, the amount, it just doesn't compute. For services, it would, maybe.
Yeah.
But.
I'm looking at.
But I think if it just comes down to snowplowing, we can probably solve that riddle.
Yeah, cause then they have to take on the whole road network, too, maintain that. Be a big expense.
But if the road commission had all those drivers, and now they don't have those drivers, they must have had the trucks.
Trucks to drive?
To have those drivers drive. So maybe there's a boneyard.
A lot of them, there's definitely.
Or they sold them all.
They're in the boneyard, for sure.
Or they sold them, yeah.
Or they sold them all.
What they do is they put wings on their highway clothes.
Contract out to people to plow?
Yeah, we can do whatever we want.
We could contract with the city to plow.
That's the hard part.
Jeremy looking for a job?
That's the hard part, because.
Yeah.
Because, you know, our taxes go, fuel or whatever, EV at some point, go to fund them. And then we'd be paying again. That's the hard part.
Would we have to pay, how much of our taxes go for snowplowing?
It's gas taxes.
But is that just a, a set fund?
Yeah.
If they didn't do snowplowing, would we get that back?
No, that's what I'm saying. So we'd have to, we'd be paying for our plow besides.
Just like the roads to pay, we paid.
Right.
On top of what we paid.
Right.
Yeah.
But some of us would be happy to pay fifty dollars a month in the winter to have our roads plowed. I'm just saying.
I would very well with you.
Jim would probably be happy, because his truck was worn down. That plowing's expensive.
I used to plow my street all the time when I had a plow in my truck.
It's expensive.
All the time. I do my own little area with my Kubota now, but I, I'm not going all the way up and down the street with it either. But, yeah, there's a lot of rough wear and tear on your own vehicle. Never once got a thank you from the county.
We didn't either when we did the road millage.
Yeah?
And now, every county, or every little place is doing a road millage, so.
Yeah, I saw the list. I think there's like two out of the nineteen townships that don't have a millage.
So, so what do we do, what are we doing here?
Yeah.
And their millages are only to maintain what they have, not, or I should, let me, when I say that.
What they owe.
It's, it's just trying to put a Band-Aid on things. It's not like we, what we've done, where we've been really proactive with.
Fixing them.
All right, we're looking at PES ratings every year, okay, when we did a chip seal on this road, that's good for three years. We're gonna come back to it and do crack seal on it and extend it another three years. A lot of these rural townships just don't have the wherewithal. They're taking in money, but they don't necessarily know how to spend it.
And some of them don't even have paved roads.
Right.
You know, those, probably those two, I think, other than the nineteen.
Dust control and stuff like that.
Right.
And our little camp association pays for that, and they're county roads, so we're paying to control the dust on our, on our camps. So everybody's pitching and paying. So everybody, they've gotten everyone to pitch in and pay for what they were responsible for once.
And it isn't their.
Well, it shouldn't be sixty-fourty.
It really isn't their fault, because it's what's coming down from the state.
Yeah.
Right, oh, I agree.
Yeah.
They've all been gutted. Even the planning world. Back when Q pad, in the eighties, they probably had twenty planners working there. Now there's three.
Yeah.
M dot's been gutted. The road commissions have been gutted, so it's not, it's not their fault. It's not mismanagement of their money. It's just the way that they get their funds.
So there's less, not even always less money coming in. There's less money to pay for the services. So the service costs have increased.
That and the amount that they get to perform the work is also.
Is it less? Or is work just more? Is it less? Or is work just more?
Well, wages are a big part of that too.
The cost is increasing far quicker than the revenue. That's the problem.
Just like it's happening in education and healthcare, everything is increasing faster than the amount coming in to pay. Jim will tell you from a business perspective.
Yeah, I don't know when we're all going to wake up and realize that we're being run by corporations. It's going to take some real intestinal fortitude to push back on it. I just saw something about Big Pharma. This guy was getting questioned by the senate. Three pills for cancer was a hundred and thirty thousand a, a month.
To pay for a job.
This company, they, they keep saying that they raise the prices of these pills for research and development and to make it better, but what they're really doing is making themselves richer because they're investing the money.
Just like the egg producers.
Yes.
Eggs don't need to cost.
The fleecing of America, as Peter Jennings would call it. So, yeah, it's terrible. We could really go on a wormhole there.
So anyways, it's twenty to seven when the poor planning commissioners are meeting at seven.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
It'll be quick, right?
Wingspan?
You've got four public hearings.
Even if they were, they're not worth watching right now.
One comment on Act Fifty-One with John. When you look at Act Fifty-One and the dollars coming in, look at where the money's going. Right off the top, the stick, the, what is it, the?
DOT.
MDOT. No, that's third down the line. You get the Secretary of State is first and there's something right after that. Then MDOT, then the county road commissions. So, Secretary of State is right off the top. You figure that out, why that money's coming out of Act Fifty-One. I fought that back in the nineties with MTA and all the rest of them. They all realized that. They said, if you fight that, they're going to reopen Act Fifty-One and beware of what's going to happen downstate. Because they have more clout than we do up here.
We don't want them to rewrite those formulas because the UP will lose.
Right.
Significantly.
Right.
And you still have to make an appointment to get into the Secretary of State. I don't get that.
You don't have to.
This is the way it broken up. Really look at some of these, the way the laws are laid out.
In February.
That.
Not supposed to.
The dollar amount is coming in for.
Well, she didn't say.
Gas taxes and that. The gas tax hasn't been raised.
Maybe she did.
And they're using less gas, so you're spending more, less money. You don't have the dollars coming in.
It actually has been raised, but not as much as it needs to, to keep up with inflation.
Well, it's been raised, but insignificant for a time, sir.
Well, since the beginning, correct.
Yeah.
Well, electric cars are nominal. There's lots of changes that need to happen to that part.
I think Act Fifty-One is going away and it's going to be replaced with something else. And it's going to cost us all more.
Right.
Just write your little electric bikes.
Is this what they meant by trickle-down economics?
So, is it even an advantage to the township to have all these big box stores and this business here? I mean, does it cost a township money or do you make money from it?
The services we provide them?
I don't know.
I don't think we have a study on it, but there is a benefit.
Yeah, I would agree with John.
I just don't know how significant the benefit is. It's going to be pretty hard from our perspective to really quantify that, I think. And that's part of the argument that some use, right? They are providing a benefit. They're drawing people from all of the surrounding areas to the township.
Provide employment, more jobs.
There is the vacant value of the land undeveloped as opposed to the current value of the land with development. So, that right there is probably enough to justify it. Although, yeah, we have to give back three years. Now, there's a reduced rate, but as long as they continue to stay in business, I would think that there's a continued benefit.
So when they go to the tax tribunal and they get their rates lowered, can they go back and get them lowered again?
Yes.
Until the government.
But they don't even go to the tribunal anymore because we can't afford to go there.
Yeah.
We have to meet with them and come to a, it is basically a compromise. That's not the right word, but that's basically what it is. Because it's the most cost-effective way for us to resolve these situations.
So the legislative people are the people that need to change it, like they did in other states?
Yes, it's a way of seeing state people who appoint.
Right.
The tax tribunal.
Yeah, the government, yeah.
That's, that's where the problem is. And as long as they're just happy with it downstate.
Right, it doesn't impact.
Damn things going to change.
Yeah, and that's true for everything that we do as a state, right.
And it's the Chamber of Commerce that's controlling, you know, what happens in Lansing. They're saying, yes, we have to support businesses and this is what they need.
But Indiana closed that loophole in thirty days.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you just have to make your voice heard, but it isn't necessarily mean something would change in your favor. That's.
Yeah.
That's how that works, but, yeah.
Yeah, probably because lobbyists.
Yeah, lobbyists.
Well, there used to be lobbyists. There still are lobbyists.
What do they call themselves now?
But now they're, they're elected.
Lobbyists.
They're appointed.
Yeah. Well, the tribunal has.
And they're regulating the very laws that they come up with.
Yeah.
That's why the banking system's so crazy. Who can understand that?
It's a mess.
I think the tribunal has seven members and they have so many cases anymore that they're all split up. And each, there's only one doing a case.
Need to make the decision.
And that one person makes the decision. And they might be an accountant. They may not have any assessing background. They could be a doctor.
Like a lawyer making a medical decision?
Mm-hmm.
But even the assessor on that tax tribunal is doing things they couldn't do as an assessor.
True, yeah.
A key to it is if we could ever affect the appointive body of that.
We tried that, remember? When Virginia was going to be, Victoria was going to be reelected. We, everybody, we got letters from everybody in the townships, in the whole county, and sent it down. And McBrue got up and I listened to the trial. Why she shouldn't be on there.
Trying, but.
Didn't do any good.
But the bottom line is, as long as that appointive group is not going to change, there's not a damn thing you can do.
That's governor-appointed.
That, I know who.
Yeah.
And then confirmed by the legislature or something.
Something like that.
So it's reverse appointment.
Yeah.
Because look at who's, who's supporting the legislators.
A quick break before our meeting.
Yeah, you probably want to take off. That's good. Thanks. This was good. Good information. We'll see you in October.
I like this format.
We like the circle.
Yeah. I would have, I told them, make it actually smaller.
Yeah, Jason, you're way too far.
But we've got employees tomorrow here.
You're going to have employees?
Employees, yeah. I'm meeting with them tomorrow, so we need this setting, so I said, we'll just leave it. We could have gotten closer. Next time we'll get closer. I was going to take a table out and I thought, what the heck? You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Take some home.
Yeah, I gave my kids money. I gave them money yesterday because I had a meeting and they got teriyaki, which was kind of expensive. And then today they wanted Florida Earl and it was like another forty. I'm like, I gave you eighty dollars in two days.
Wow.